Thanks, everybody. Apparently, we're getting away free something. Thanks for your attendance at this special meeting on short notice. Based on the request from Martha and Carol, I did the best I could to expedite the meeting and move it to this particular date. Otherwise, with conflicts within Town Hall, such as four or five meetings all in the same place, at least we dodged that bullet. So, to get started, as advertised in the agenda, I'm going to appeal to the committee. I had a request from one of the committee people to move the public comments section to the end of the meeting so that you can digest what is discussed. So, I'd entertain a motion from the committee to members. Seconded by Martha Duffy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, folks. To get to the new business, we will be discussing the Munjam Tea Placement Plan. And I hope this isn't a conflicted point of view for some, but this is the most recent iteration of Mark Munjam's plan for tea placement. It's very specific to a request that Roman put in place with Munjam Associates, who's done a lot of work for us in the past, whether it's bunker renovation or a lot of the changes that you've seen in and around the golf course. They are the architect select that's been involved. And prior to that, with scorecard discrepancies and Ellen, if I can pick on you in a way, not pick on you, but Martha had pointed out the need for a revamped scorecard, and I believe a request was made by the ladies' association to do, in fact, that. So, this is part of that plan. Obviously, the committee, as opposed to yourselves, you know, they've had the ability to digest a lot of information that's been, you know, out in the public domain. And because of that, we get a chance to expedite things in a way. And I'm going to call on Martha first and then Carol, I believe.
Thank you.
According to Martha.
Do we need the lights on, all?
I'm new to the meetings. Could everyone introduce themselves? I'm not familiar with everyone.
You raise a good point. At the, uh...
Hello.
Thomas Edison. There's many who could help us out, too. In the midst of, I was apprised that for the record, people in attendance, like Sarah Jen, our secretary, he'd like the names of the people who are present. So, you helped me remind me of that, okay? I'll introduce the committee, John Crook, Carol Fuller, Jack Conley, Martha Duffy, myself, and sadly, one of our committeemen has COVID. He won't participate. Paul White, a very, very important member of the group, as well as Steve Bellotta. And he's somewhere between Framingham and Sagamore Bridge and hopefully eventually Howard. He may walk through the doors.
But he may not get to a seat.
We say that, though. But just to expedite things, and this was in the agenda, specific to the bullet points, I asked Carol for to, so that we wouldn't be all over the map as far as considerations. So, Martha, the floor is yours.
I want to start out by saying the objective of this meeting is to discuss the 2022 Munjam Tea Evaluation Report, our proposed changes for the Cranberry Valley Golf Course, and reach an outcome of better playability and satisfies the range of swing speeds of women golfers. I'd like to review for all of us the timeline of events leading up to today's meeting. Prior to 2017, MGA course rating, green tee boxes were built on holes 2, 5, 8, 16, 17, and 18 without formal design recommendation from a course architect. In 2017, MGA rerated the course for the men's blue, white, silver, and the women's red and green. After pushback from the Cranberry Women's Golf Association, 18 hole, Roman told the MGA to recertify the red course as its current slope rating of 127 instead of the lower rating recommended by the MGA. And that's why we're here today. In 2017, Mark Munjam, golf course architect, was hired to create a tea evaluation record report, and I quote, "to provide recommendations on additional forward tees, to shorten the red course, and to provide more alternate tee grounds for the silver tee user." He goes on to state, "There should be shorter tees than the reds for beginners and children." This proposal, 2017 Munjam Report to shorten the red tees, was not implemented. Fast forward to 2022, June 8, the Golf Committee had a planning meeting. A discussion of short and long-term goals took place. According to the meeting minutes, tea complex renovation in the new configuration of forward tees, women's tees, and the companion issue of rating the women's course with the anticipation of the 2022 Munjam Tea Report was to be discussed at the June 21 Golf Committee meeting. June 21 Golf Committee meeting was on the agenda, the Munjam 2022 Report to be discussed by the Golf Committee. Two hours prior to our June 21 meeting, the Golf Committee members received the 2022 Munjam Tea Layout Design and an email from Roman. Needless to say, I was playing Tuesday, so I never got the report. The purpose of the '22 design was to get Cranberry Valley Golf Course rerated by the At the June 21 meeting, Roman reviewed the changes and suggested that the committee members take time to read the proposal, which some never got. Carol and I took the proposal. We reviewed it hole by hole. July 19, our Golf Committee meeting, in our July meeting, here is what I said regarding our observations about the report, and it bears repeating. It is our understanding that the reasoning used to move the women's tees forward was to provide a more enjoyable golf experience. We feel that it is important to get this done right for the women golfers at Cranberry Valley, not only to uphold the integrity of the course, but to uphold our financial responsibility to the people of Howard. The report was based, and as we know, on old-school cards that were incorrect. It is important to get this data corrected so that the new yardage are accurate and net change in yardage is correct. Several of the proposed hole changes suggested using fairway tees. These tees, we felt, were insulting to women who expect to tee off from an established tee box, not tee markers in the fairway. Also, there are two existing tee boxes on holes 8 and 16 that are no longer going to be used, thus wasting resources that have already been used to build these two boxes. And in fact, the proposed moves the women back to a distance that is contradictory to the goal of the architect. Most women will not be able to reach these par fives, needless in regulation and in many instances, not having opportunity to par the hole. Because of our obligation to get this report in an accurate form, we ask to be part of a subcommittee that meets with the Director of Golf and the architect to review the report, our observations and the other observations from the Golf Committee members. As noted, I asked for a subcommittee, which the chair chose not to support. Since that meeting, Carol and I have met several times with Don Howell, selected liaison to the Golf Committee. We've met twice with Megan Eldredge, the Assistant Town Manager, to get guidance on how to proceed with the issues that I have highlighted. Additionally, we've been in contact with the Cranberry Valley Women's Golf Association, 18-hole President Ellen Deary, to review our findings, which are being supported by the league. This special meeting is an outcome of the recommendations from the Golf Committee Liaison, and I would like to thank the Chair for setting up this meeting. I would like to start the next part, and it can be a discussion if you wish. I'm going to speak about the red course, the long course, and then Carol will talk about the green course. And I'm just mentioning a few holes so that you are cognizant of what we're trying to achieve here today. Hole 17 is inconsistent with the architect's stated opinion about the length of a par three for women. It is planned for 164 yards. The architect stated that this was a cruel option for a par three for women. The course has an existing box at 112. In the 2017 report, the architect stated a new tee of about 500 square feet in area was recently added, which permits shortening of the hole to about 115. I recommend that the red and the new yellow markers be shifted to this tee. Doesn't it make sense to move the red tee forward to a combo with the green and the yellow tees at 112? The other thing that we should add here is that the Director of Golf and the professionals at the club have us using that green and red tee for over two years and never knew it, and it was a mistake. And when they found out it was a mistake, they put the red back at 163. And then I would go to hole number four, which is exactly like 17, another long par three. In the 2017 report, which states, I quote, "The first par three on the course historically played from 212 to 153 yards before the recent addition of a forward tee at about 130." This new tee will host the red markers. Again, does it make sense to move the red tee to a combo with the green tee of 127 yards? Let me remind you again that for two or three years, we played that combo, red and green, at 127. Hole 14 was moved back on an already difficult par four to a length of 350. The men's silver is at 38 and a non-conforming par five. Discuss that as a topic. The realignment to shorten hole two to the existing green tee box, the architect's 2017 plan expressed concern about its proximity on the oncoming eighth fairway, which I believe one woman was hit by a ball coming from the eighth fairway not too long ago. We should have a discussion about the risk and liability. Should this tee box be moved back until Cranberry Valley can build one in a safer place? Those are just a few of the holes that I have highlighted for your reflection.
So, much of what Martha said, I have scripted here, too, but it probably bears repeating because it is that important for all of us. Before I begin the discussion of the issues, discrepancies, and inconsistencies of the women's short course, our current green, I would like to briefly go back also to the 21st meeting. Again, I think it was important to know for that meeting, we received our information less than two hours, so we made some comments based on just a brief look at a diagram. Following that brief discussion, Roman said to us, all of us on the committee, spend some time to review it. I would encourage you to look it over. Well, Martha and I did. Roman also said, "It accomplished our goal for rerating the existing tees, red and green, by changing each to 100 yards." It did not. Roman also said, in fact, the red tees did change, the green shorter tee box changed by only 80 yards. Roman said Munjam was charged with making changes only using the existing tees. He did not. Instead, he placed women on five mowed surfaces on the fairway. As you know, Martha and I have tried very hard to share our concerns with Roman and Mark together. We have been denied each time. Apparently, that is Roman's right as a town employee. Martha, as she said, asked the Chair in our last meeting to be a part of a subcommittee with our fellow committee members to discuss the issues with Roman, and our Chair chose not to act. But again, that is his right. We then sought counsel from the Board of Selectment Liaison, Don Howell, on how to engage our Chair and have the opportunity for this special meeting. Though I think it's important, we asked Roman to be here, and we asked by either in person or by Zoom, the architect, that it did not happen. And I think that's pretty important because that was really, we wanted them here for this fairly significant discussion. So, specifically regarding the shorter women's course, as I mentioned, the architect thought he changed our shorter women's course option by 152 yards. That distance would have qualified for an MGA rerating. The actual change is 80. Inaccurate information should have been sent back to the architect to have been corrected.
Carol, can I stop you for a second? When you say it's 80, I mean, you've seen this document.
Yes.
This says 5132 and 4980. Where, what are you saying? Are you saying the existing card should be different than 5132?
Yes. Yes, yes. Our existing card is 5,060 for the short course. So, that's what we were saying. This is incorrect. Roman stated his request asked that changes made to the course and the scorecard use only existing tee sets. This did not happen. Women were and are scheduled to be placed on mowed grass surfaces on five holes. That is nearly 30% of our holes for the short course. The holes slated to be on the fairways are hole four, hole eight, hole nine, hole 12, and hole 15. To my fellow committee members...
Is that based on the recommendation of Munjam?
Yes.
Not currently in place today?
Not currently in place today. We don't have any...
Yeah.
We have properly built tee boxes for all of our holes, John. And so, I would say to all of you committee members, women find this recommendation to be demeaning, insulting, and degrading. This is gender inequity, even if it is considered only a short-term recommendation. One woman shared this with me. If I came to a course and plunked down $100 to play that course and found I was playing on a tee on a fairway, I'd drive myself back to the pro shop and I'd demand my money back. To me, and I think you might agree, at least I hope you do, is certainly not the look we want to convey on our premier golf course on Cape Cod. Roman stated in a prior meeting, "This plan that we received has no building component whatsoever, and therefore means no newly constructed tee boxes." Yet, in a previous meeting, he said his crew was already out there starting to mow the surface for the five fairway tee boxes, the fairway boxes. It appears Roman is or was getting ready to move forward with this plan. I would more than suggest, if we vote to move forward with this, this part of Mark's recommendation, placing women on mowed fairway surfaces, it would create a very, very significant problem for Cranberry Valley. The construction of new tee boxes has not been planned or funded. Until we do so, why would we proceed with this component? What we should be doing is prioritizing this component in our plans and requesting funding. Even in his letter yesterday, which we received yesterday, says, "This plan is a working document. It does not need to be approved in full or denied." He admits that some fairway tees will require some planning and possibly funding should be put, should we choose to pursue. However, Roman also, in that same letter, "If the committee puts forward a motion to vote, I am recommending the current plan from Mark Munjam, which will support our management team in pursuing the implementation of these improvements." So now, getting to a little bit more specific information, holes 8 and 16. This new plan eliminated both existing newly-built tee boxes. Why did we build them and now not use them? Who were they built for? Was this on Munjam's plan? Roman states, "The tee boxes were separate from the master plan," and with a very casual conversation with the committee. That decision has wasted money and has now placed us in a difficult situation. Hole 16, the plan moves us all the way back to the longer option. I'm talking the shorter option, currently known as our green option. According to Roman, this was done because the distance did not comply with USGA-recommended yardage for a par five. This is true on hole 16 by 60 yards. But we pointed out, our men's course does not comply with USGA-recommended yardage on two holes. On hole 14, it does not comply with the blues, the whites, or the silvers. And that by 70 yards. So, it feels as though the gender standard is applied to the women's course and not the men's. Hole 8, this plan moves women back 78 yards and places us on a fairway tee. Our newly-built existing tee box does comply with the USGA standard by five yards, but the architect does not like the location of a sand trap to the tee. I kind of wonder if he felt we would rather play farther back on the fairway tee box.
I don't understand that comment.
Okay.
You want me to interrupt now or not?
Sure.
I'm looking at Munjam's report.
Yes.
"I'd recommend adding a new tee for the red markers at the start of the existing fairway, a little right of the center line, about 423 yards from the green. In doing so, the start of the fairway should be shifted away from the tee." The tee currently now is on the left hand...
Which report are you looking at?
I'm looking at Munjam's report.
That's the 2017 one. 2017.
I don't care which report it is. This is what he recommended back in 17 that you had mentioned earlier that we didn't act on.
We didn't.
So, why can't we still act on it?
Talk to Roman about that.
No, 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 no. But I mean, looking at some of the recommendations that are in place, they make sense.
Instead...
When he put the plan together, he developed a red course for 5,000 yards, which I think everybody wanted.
Are you talking red or red-green or what?
I'm talking red, ladies' tee. When you take a look at the tee right now on the scorecard...
He's talking green, forward tee.
I'm talking the forward tees, John.
Number one was the red tee, though. That was the first initial problem that we had because the red tee was at 5,500 yards.
He has now swapped red and green.
Yes. But what do you... So what do you play, the red or the green?
I play our existing red tee box.
Everybody plays. What I'm saying is, the problem was initially, going back to 17 and I think continuing until today, it was a 5,500-yard course and it was way too long for the, for the women. And Munger agreed to that. You have to go back to 1973 when this course was designed. It was designed under 1973 guidelines. Women were not involved in the game like they are today, that's for sure.
Bingo.
What's that?
Bingo.
The what?
Bingo.
She agrees.
You're with.
So I mean, that's why changes have to be made. I mean, eventually, I think that's why he recommended a course of 5,000 yards, which I think is more accommodating for all the women that play golf. Now, as far as the short course goes, my inclination is that he came up with recommendations for the short course, the green tees, okay, which would be in the neighborhood of 4,500 yards. Now, to get to that 4,500 yards, some of the recommendations that were in place were to put the tees on the fairway, which I think everybody has basically said that that's a travesty, that we don't want to play tee balls on the fairway. We want built-up tees. And I agree with that.
But that, I'm at our, that, you're speaking to my point.
But I don't know what your objective is, though. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish here. I mean, I think all the guidelines were in place to make the right changes.
But they haven't been implemented, John.
I think you, I think you're not giving it time, though.
But, but.
You're not giving it time.
Excuse me.
John, may I?
John.
John, who?
Excuse me, through the chair, please. Point of order, when we get into our discussion of each and every hole, I think we can pursue that, John, more.
Sorry.
Carol, I'd like you to finish.
Thank you. So, going back, I was discussing hole eight, the plan to move women back 78 yards and place us on a fairway tee. Having heard John's point, I would say that our objection is not the distance as much as it is that we are being placed on the fairway in a grass-mowed surface. And until we are prepared to put forth a plan that for properly built tee boxes for women, we are having an objection to this plan. All in all, the decisions made for the women's course seems to apply different standards and past changes to the course seem very unprofessional. Where is or what is the master plan? Is it the 2017 existing and proposed scorecard? Is that part of the master plan? If so, that Munger plan expresses concern with the proximity of the green tee on the eighth fairway, to the eighth fairway. The new plan has all women playing from it. Is the master plan the August 2017 tee evaluation report, which I think you were reading from? If so, here's what Mark Munger had to say about that. Although I love that this tee isn't hidden and provides a great angle to the fairway, I have some concerns that it may be too close to the eighth fairway in an area that may not be visible to players hitting their second shot from the eighth hole. That is exactly what Martha was talking about. Everything I've seen says something different. One of the report iterations, scorecards, and hole design is gold, blue, white, green, red, and yellow. Another is blue, white, silver, green, and red. Is it any wonder that it is extremely difficult to understand? I would suggest we more clearly define our plans. I yield back to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Committeeman. Okay, folks, we've, I think, digested what Carol has had to say. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments that might be helpful to you. This master plan, the 2017, which has been referenced and somewhat conflated with the request that Roman put forward recently, that came under the price tag of a quarter million dollars. And if you remember Martha, the committee decided that since irrigation, everybody, considering our water situation right now, considering irrigation was the top priority, that's what shifted priorities from that master plan to where we are today. Okay? Another comment relative to the subcommittee. We met last Tuesday in an effort to accommodate Carol and Martha. I, I think I did a pretty good job getting this meeting in place.
You did.
The idea of putting a subcommittee in place, in my humble estimation, would have exacerbated the whole thing, stretched out this conversation to an unknown date, considering the requirements that Selectmen Howell put on the committee at the last meeting pursuant to the fact that subcommittees had to report post their meetings, post their minutes, et cetera. It might not sound like much of a challenge, but it is a challenge and it creates a timeframe that keeps moving this way, folks. So with that in mind, I'd like to put focus, if we could, on exactly what Roman has delineated as this plan for tee placement. And I'm, I'm reading from the note that was shared with Carol as well, and I'm quoting Roman. "I hired Mark Munger to evaluate tee positions of the existing tee grounds in order to recommend hole distance and overall yardage for each tee set. One of the leading factors in retaining Mark for this service was to have a detailed plan that would qualify Cranberry Valley for new rating and provide our staff with detailed sketches for each hole and tee placement. Mark's plan accomplished this goal." Now, I don't know if everybody had a chance, but we posted that online so that you could look at the sketches as well. And if you had a lot of printer ink, it's only 18 pages long. I've chosen to, I've chosen to use the electronic version of it. But, you know, to get the ball rolling and to put perspective on what Mark Munger actually said, this is excerpted from the only communication that I've seen from Mark Munger that directly relates to this new plan. Everybody with me? So I know it's kind of didactic or tedious perhaps, but I'm going to circulate this to the committee. They may already have copies of it, but I'll beg your indulgence. I just wanted to use it as a guidepost because I think it cuts to the chase, so to speak.
What was the date of this, please?
Uh, God, I have to go back and look.
Who was it from and what is it?
Yeah, it says.
This is to Jerome Greer from Mark Munger. That's why it says regards. But I couldn't squeeze it onto one sheet of paper and I thought my printer was going to run out of ink, so, so be it. But if anybody needs those details, I will share accordingly. But in essence, he says, "I'm still working on sketches, but attached is the proposed scorecard I came up with. Please note a few things. I have proposed that four of the forward tee markers be shifted up to the start of the fairway." That's consistent with what John said. And I think that spirit, that intent came perhaps from the, you know, that master plan. The language seemed similar to me. "I feel the holes are too long for beginners and many women from the existing tee ground. And each of these holes has a flat area within the existing fairway that will accept tee markers. If the flat area isn't large enough, it would be a fairly simple process to strip the turf, strip the turf, add some loam, level the ground, and reinstall the grass. This is a process that we often recommend in doing courses to shorten the hole length." And John, I believe there are a number of golf courses that, you know, you people might not be familiar with, but this is an accepted practice that you see on various venues. I also proposed, and this is where it gets terribly confusing, I think, I also proposed flipping the red and green markers. His rationale is, "No matter how much we try to change the colors, most men will gravitate to the white and women to the red. At 5,568, the existing red course is much, much too long for the average woman to play." This is Mark Munger. So I don't think there's any ambiguity about a degree of sensitivity to the request of the women. "A 5,000-yard course is way more appropriate for the red tee markers. I have attempted to get better balance at the par-three holes. I dislike the lack of distance separation on the current course." The white, excuse me, the white card has holes of 168, 161, 161, and 193. And that was in this document that if you maybe didn't have time to print out, but if you haven't, that's what the numbers reference. "I realize that the elevation and wind come into play, but three of the holes are too similar in distance and there is no short hole, which can be the most fun. The proposed par-three lengths for the white course are 167, 146, 158, and 193. Still, no very short hole, but I think better than the existing card. Using the existing tees, I was not able to develop the same balance for the green and red course. I could have made hole four or 17 longer to get greater separation in length, but when the average woman's drive is 140 to 150 yards, it seems cruel to me to have a par-three of 163 or 175 yards." When you go to the proposed card, okay, he is proposing, in the red course, on hole number four, a tee of 104 yards. That would become the short par-three. On hole number seven, he has that bracketed at 131. Okay? On hole, excuse me, on hole number 13, he has it bracketed at 127. And for hole 17, it's bracketed at 112 yards. What's that?
164, which is the current, that's 112 for the short course.
I'm, I'm reading.
It's not correct. It's not correct. It's not correct.
Correct what exists today?
I'm sorry.
164, 112.
Yeah.
That is the correct yardage today.
If they want to talk about green and red, we all got it stuck in our head the way it is today. So when you talk about it here, it's better to talk long women's course first, sure. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It seems to me that that's what's getting, it's confusing to me and I've been digging into this.
Yeah. Okay, in any event, he said, "Please contact me with any questions or comments." Yeah.
Please contact.
Well, I, I don't want to speak for Carol or Martha, but to me, one of the points of contention is still the distance of the long course. I mean, he's proposing 5,300 yards. If I interpret his message correctly, he's talking the red course is currently 5,568 yards. A 5,000-yard course is more appropriate for red tee markers. So I assume the target for the green tees ought to be something like 5,000 yards in that vicinity.
I think that's 49.
No, I'm talking about the long course. Let me approach it that way. The long course now is 5,568.
Right.
I don't know how to interpret his message, but it says, "At 5,568 yards, the existing course is much too long." Totally agree with that. A 5,000-yard course is more appropriate. I guess my interpretation is the long course for the women ought to have a target distance of around 5,000 yards.
What about the magic?
I don't know.
Please. Jack has a board?
The, I don't know whether the men's are in question here. I mean, I have no problem whatever the distances you, you wish. I mean, to me, what I'm hearing is, is a dissatisfaction with the proposed card that's been developed by Mark. Is that correct?
It is, it is not so much the card. It, what it, although in the longer woman's course, which is recommended at 5,363 yards, we do have some issue with the fact that he is not providing us with a more fun option on a par-three other than that 164. But he is, he is providing the green with the 4,980, but he is placing them now, us now, on five.
Understand that.
Okay, that is, that is much more, that's our concern versus the distances he's choosing.
So the issue isn't the 5,300 yards. The issue is.
The aesthetics of the tee box.
The 5,000, I mean, the 4980 being on five different fairways.
Yes.
Okay. If, if we proposed that, and I don't know whether it needs a subcommittee or what, but if we proposed that we establish a subcommittee that would look at using the existing facilities, the existing tees, to come up with a course or a distance of 4980, would that ameliorate or improve the situation for you folks?
Well, I think, I think there are alternative solutions to that. First of all, his new recommendation really changed our course by 80 yards. Why would we do all of this at this moment?
Right.
For that change? One alternative would be to, for now, until we get a properly designed plan and have the funding to move forward to put us on proper tee boxes, maybe we leave it as it is. That's one idea.
Okay.
That'd be great.
And in deference to both Roman and Mark Munger, he did respond to Roman on Friday, and I've got a condensed insight as to what he informed Roman about. So, you know, because I wanted to stay focused on each hole in reference to what Carol presented, he starts with hole number two, and these are his comments. "He likes the sightlines for play between the bunkers on the tee shot and a distance for two. The two forward tee sets from the most forward tee box. Concern was raised in the agenda about liability, but Mark does not suggest any type of partition or screening for the tee box." Regarding hole number eight, where I had been discussing, the move back to a distance of 428 yards from the new tee distance of 375 for a new tee is an issue of distance. Mark feels strongly that this is more an issue of location and angle. The distance for a downhill par-five without a forced carry to the green is more appropriate from the new recommended distance while taking into account the improved. from the new recommended distance while taking into account the improved location and angle. Regarding holes 14 and 16, these holes have a different par per gender, as hole 14 is a short and easier par five for the men and a long and difficult four for women, and vice versa on hole 16. While the distance for men are consistent for a par five within the flow of the course design, this is the easy five before a hard finish. The women's distance is consistent with the overall design of the hard four before the easier par five, 16th hole. Hole 17, keeping with the theme of flow of the design and character of the golf course, every feature on hole 17 is a long par three feature on an overall design with the character that features a hard finish. While Mark did mention the word cruel when describing this hole, in context, he was discussing why he didn't recommend making it longer than the 164 yards he recommends for the current red course. And when trying to get separation in distances for the par threes, the features of the hole and the overall design identify hole 17 as the long par three. As stated above, I hired Mark to evaluate the positions of the existing tee grounds in order to recommend hole distance and overall yardage for each tee set. Mr. Munjam is a respected golf course architect who's done high-quality work for Cranberry Valley in the past. He has been recommended by the Wadsworth Golf Charities for the current request for quote, for our putting complex and the short course. I find this most recent submission, the proposed tee location and scorecard, to be consistent with his previous high-quality work. I endorse this plan as a working document that we can work with to improve the golf course by balancing the yardages for all five tee sets and receiving a balanced golf course rating from Mass Golf. I am working with our management team to discuss particulars of possible implementation and a timeline. Concerns of inequity or inferior product being presented to any segment of our golfers at Cranberry Valley is premature, as I don't believe we have ever presented an inferior or inequitable golf course in the past. Implementation of plans takes time. As always, I will discuss any changes related to the golf course in our public meetings and solicit feedback.
Why is he here?
He wasn't available. He's not actually technically part of the committee, so I don't have.
He was an invited guest.
He was. He and Munjam. He's been at the course all day.
Let me finish, please. If the committee chooses to put forth a motion for a vote, I recommend an endorsement of the current plan from Mark Munjam, which will support our management team in pursuing the implementation of these improvements as a working document. Carol?
Clem, there are a couple of points here. First, as you know, we have asked to be allowed to express our concerns with Roman and with the architect, and that is why we invited the architect to be present. That didn't happen, and we even invited the architect by Zoom tonight. And let me just go back and just one point, another point. Roman did not put forward our requests and our issues and concerns to the architect in writing. He only called him on the phone. I don't know exactly what Roman said, and I don't know exactly what the, how the architect replied. And I think that's very important, because there is interpretation here. And let me give you another example. Here's what the architect said in his reply on hole 14. The 14th hole is currently played as a par five from the gold, blue, white, and silver. That is when we had gold.
Carol, just for the record, you're quoting from?
This is, this is from the Cranberry Valley Golf Course Tee Evaluation Report, August 2017, the one that John has been using.
Not the present.
There was no verbal, there was no verbal.
Not the current.
On the current one, none.
So I would assume he would be somewhat consistent in at least his evaluation. So, the red marker distance, 343 yards, is only 10 yards less than the silver markers. This seems very unfair, especially when one considers that the putting surface is fronted by a bunker that nearly eliminates running a ball to the green. The current blue and white marker distance are 445 and 402 respectively, hardly a modern par five. I favor a hole being the same par for all players. In the case of hole 14, I feel it should be a par five from all tees. And, and what did he do here in this report? He kept not only the men at a par five and the women at a par four, but he moved the women back even farther. That is totally inconsistent with what he is saying in this narrative, so.
You're saying in the 2022 report is, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yes.
Carol's talking about the 2017, and then her last comment was about the 22.
That's correct. I'm sorry.
On the proposed scorecard?
On the proposed scorecard.
Yeah.
Why would he do it? The men are, are playing a par five, we are a par four. The men on that hole, all of their ratings do not comply with USGA distance standards as a par five, and he is pushing the women back farther. So that is an inconsistency we just don't get. We would have loved to have had the conversation with Mark about that. He may not even realize he did that. We don't know.
Well, he did know that in 17.
He did know that.
That's what he recommended in 17, that it could be a par five.
Yes, he did. Right. But what I'm saying, John, is that on this.
The question is, who did the proposed scorecard?
Well, it could be.
No, it's Munjam.
Yeah.
Munjam Golf Design.
Yeah, he knows that. I think he's asking it a different way, a different context.
With regards to the timing of the meeting, and it may not resonate with everyone here, but I was just pleased that Roman had contact with Mr. Munjam at all. He is a, yes, I mean, in the world of golf and golf architects, they're busy people. They're out in Western Mass. I think logistically, to anticipate or expect him being here, you know, was a stretch.
How much did we pay him?
Excuse me.
How much did we pay him, the architect? I think it's worth 1,000, something million dollars.
No.
No.
For this go-around, they paid him $1,800.
They paid him $1,850, people. The document's available, you know, as a mere public record. The point is, I guess, where do we go from here, people? I'd like to hear from Steve and John and Martha again.
Do we?
Steve, I could start with you.
No, that's all right. I'll pass by now.
Okay.
I think.
John?
I think there's two issues. I think a lot of it, to me, should be revert back to the 2017 report.
I do, too.
And I think that we have to develop a, I'll use for better, for lack of better terminology, the red course, the red tees should be 5,000 yards. That's, that's where the course should be designed. You can do the 5,000 courses within the existing tee boxes that you have now, with a few exceptions. The other course, the green course, which is going to be anywhere around 4,500 yards basically.
On the way around.
You want, I thought the shorter, you needed a shorter course.
The shorter course is the 5,000-yard course.
Oh, so the green course would be the silver tees, then?
It would, it would be, no, it wouldn't necessarily be the silver tees. It would be a change of our existing longer women's option, currently known as the red tees on the scorecard, which is the 5,568. He has reduced it to 5,300.
But is that acceptable?
No.
What would you like that distance to be? What would you like the longer women's course to be?
Longer than the 5,000-yard option.
Okay.
So I have to comply, I have to comply to a certain standard.
I can't, I've got to keep the conversation specific to the committee, so I appreciate your interest. There'll be a time to speak at the end.
You mean before we take action?
Yeah. We should hear from the public before we take any action or make a.
Was there continuing?
I hope.
So the red tee marks, so the red tee mark is, we're looking at 5,000 yards. That's the one that you're looking for for the ladies' tees.
The shorter option.
The shorter option.
That's what he is.
I'm saying, what are you looking for?
I'm not looking for any particular.
Because that's already recommended back in 2017, 5,000 yards. If you look, add up all his yardages that he recommended in the 2017 report, it comes out to be 49, 48. Now, what we're saying is the green tees would be somewhere between that yardage and the silver tees?
Yes, very likely. Yes. The answer is yes.
Okay.
And in the case of our course now, we have combination red, silver. We have combination red and green. You can easily get to the yardage that he feel, he feels, or I don't know who feels. I guess it has to be the architect feels is reasonable. But certainly, what he is proposing, what this current proposal for the longer women's tees seems reasonable with the exception of not providing us a shorter option. Martha, would you say that is, I'm sorry. Okay. That our longer women's option that he is recommending seems reasonable with the exception of our loving to get rid of the 164 par three?
Not bring it down to about 53, 5,300. And then the green one was 49. Correct?
Yeah.
So if I understand what you're.
Moving those par threes to 112 and 127.
If I understand what you're saying.
That's all it is.
Carol, Martha, this 5,383 is acceptable from a distance perspective.
It is to me.
Yes.
And what I'm hearing is, you're saying that the 17th, I guess, at a distance of 164, you would like to see that at a shorter distance.
And that would bring it to 53, Jack.
Okay. And then the other issue that I think I heard was the 4980 may also be acceptable, but the big issue is the location of all five of the tees that are stuck on the fairway.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Chairman, Jack, the green tee boxes with the red is 4,900. We don't have to change. We can use those tee boxes.
Now you're confusing me. You mean, there's a, there's a green-red option, too?
Yes.
Yes, it's a green, we have seven green holes, Jack, and the others are red-green.
That's our existing distance.
Okay.
We don't have 18 green boxes. We only have seven.
That's acceptable as well, except possibly the fact that he's positioning five of the tees on the fairway.
Right.
Okay.
We don't need them.
Well, if I look at the distances between the red and the green, to get the distance of 4980, you do need them, because if you go back to the green tee, you're adding 40, 50 yards at a whack to the, to the red, the shorter course.
Well, the 2017, the.
I'm looking at this 2022 one, sorry.
This red, which is green, is 4,953.
Okay, I'm looking at this 22 proposal.
This is the 22.
And it's 4,980 for the red.
Because he's using five tees on the fairway.
On the fairway.
Right.
But what I'm saying, Martha, is if you eliminated those five tees from being in the fairway, and I don't know this, but I could, we could determine it, that, like, look at 131 and 104 is the first one. That's where you're on a fairway. That's a 30, a 28-yard, 29-yard, 27-yard difference. I assume that might bring you back onto a tee.
Yes.
Then you've got a 70.
It's because it's.
Then you've got a 70-yard difference on, or 50-yard difference, 40-yard difference on the next one. Then you have a 62-yard difference, then you have a 40-yard difference. So if you, if you try to match, what I'm trying to get is, if you try to move those tees that he had in the fairway to.
A tee box.
Existing tee box.
Right.
It's likely you're going to push this red number.
Almost equal.
Almost equal to the 5,383.
It'll be the same as the green.
No, that, it appears that way. Our existing tees, exactly where they are here, are only 5,060 yards. It's 80 yards shorter than he is recommending.
Okay, so, so you're saying blow this red column away and use the red-green?
For now, until we have an opportunity to properly plan out the tee boxes.
Time by many.
In the future.
Yeah. That's great.
To build them, to fund them.
And I would think, you know, I mean, obviously, he's an architect, but if you want, if you guys want to make the 164 and there's a tee in the way, pick the tee, and whatever that distance is, it is. I mean, I don't, an architect's an architect. I don't think moving to a different tee would dramatically change the nature of his course.
Yes, Carol?
I just have one other point. Changing our women's longer option to what appeared to be in 2017 to 5,000 is, is sort of outrageous, because the women's longer option, our women players with the higher swing speeds would find that that just a, a course that they really would not enjoy or find challenging. Yes, or competitive. And when we are hosting other courses, would find it not appropriate.
Well, Steve again? No?
Sure.
I just thought you were.
No, I, I've been listening and reading. My, my recommendation would be we, we take a step back, not focus as much on the specific reports and the difference between the 2017 and the 2022 report, but instead, just come up with some high-level goals. up with some high-level goals. We should not try, I don't believe that we on the committee, and maybe some people in the public are, but I don't believe anybody on the committee is a golf course architect. And trying to design and specify by hole where the tee boxes should be, I don't have the expertise to do that properly. If, if we focus instead on the goals, we want it to be compliant with the PGA or, or Mass Golf or whatever that, whatever that...
MGAs.
The MGAs, okay.
It's not MGAs, it's Mass Golf.
Mass Golf, all right. We want it to be compliant with, with Mass Golf so that we can get, we can get a rating and be a certified golfer. We want to make it an enjoyable experience for people of either sex and, and any age and any ability to be able to go out and enjoy themselves on our municipal golf course. We want to, if we want to stay within the confines of the distance requirements by the authoritative organizations, maybe we say we need at least three tee box, three tee placements that are compliant with that, and we have a couple that aren't. And you don't worry as much about that if there's a 10-year-old kid playing. He or she doesn't care whether or not Mass Golf approves it for the majority of them. But come up with some high-level goals and then go back to Munjam potentially as a golf architect and Roman as the director of golf, an expert in golf management and golf courses, and ultimately, the final decision-maker. I mean, we as a committee, it was pretty clear after our last meeting, that we as a committee are just an advisory board. It's not our business to dictate to the people who are paid to run a golf course where the tee boxes should be. It's, that's not our job. It's not our purview. It's not the public's purview to second-guess a town employee as he or she is trying to do their job. You know, sorry, but that's who was hired to do the job. They need to do their job and they have the authority and the right to do their job. Certainly, an option is, and hopefully we'd come out of, if we came up with these high-level goals, one of the options is probably going to be, we're going to have to spend some money to build some new tee boxes, eventually, at some point in time.
Absolutely.
And then it's our job as a golf committee to advise Roman as to what that priority should be in the grand scheme of the funds that we have to spend on the golf course to try to make it as enjoyable as possible for the annual pass holders and the general public that comes to play. But, you know, Carol, I, I understand this is very important to you and Martha, and you're drilling down, and God bless you for both, for all the time and effort that you've put in, but to be perfectly frank, as a consultant in my previous business life, I would not entertain getting second-guessed on my recommendations and come to a public forum to have my work questioned. That's, that's not what you do. You hire a consultant to give you advice and make recommendations, but you are the final decision-maker and you get to decide. But you don't get to second-guess and ask, ask every detail of why did you do this and why did you do that? That's not their job, to answer to other organizations or other people outside of the people that, that hired them. So I think it's our job to do similar to the scope of services that we did for the, for the, for the short course and the, do it at a high-level goal. And then, if we get a report back from Roman and to Munjam, and it doesn't meet those high-level goals, then we have a real issue. We're not trying to, we're not trying to micromanage the development and the design of the golf course. We're saying, no, our job is to come up with these high-level goals, and you missed them. And again, and to give us options. Some options are going to cost money, some options, maybe we could implement it almost immediately and, and do it for little to no money as an interim option, I don't know. But that's what I think our role as, as a committee is, not to, not to ask a consultant to come here in front of us and in a public forum to second-guess hole by hole his recommendations.
I appreciate your comments. People, pursuant to what Steve just said, you might find this interesting, you might not agree, but it is the way it is. The contract between Munjam Associates is not with this golf committee. It's with Roman Greer and the town of Howard. And that's why, in that domain, to Steve's point, we are, you know, relegated to our capacity.
What do we have committees for?
Well, you know, I, I think that if we...
I'm wasting all my time.
We haven't exhausted the topic, Martha.
So why is your capacity then?
It's an advisory.
Exactly as Steve...
It's an advisory.
We are advisory.
That's what we're doing.
You've got two reports, multiple score...
Well, that's why we have a committee, and we are charged with that responsibility to bring us to a conclusion. And I would like to do that within the committee. I, I think it seems appropriate, or there's a possibility here, Jack, I liked your idea of, to accomplish what Steve has alluded to, the formation of a subcommittee that perhaps would have that charge. What does a committee feel about that?
I have a question. Why don't you ask some of the people out here what they think?
No, Martha, excuse me. It's the purvey of the committee. We are bound, duty-bound to act accordingly within the committee's purvey. We have a public comments section at the end of the meeting. I will be glad to entertain any comments as such. Yes.
We were asked by the director of golf to review this report, take it home and study it. Didn't use the word "study," we applied that to ourselves. And in that review, we found issues, discrepancies, and areas of gender inequity. I think it's our duty to bring that forward so that the board of selectmen, who we advise, know what our concerns are. We paid for a report, a report, we never saw what the actual report asked. We never really saw any narrative coming back. So I think it is our duty to do this, Steve. I think we are certainly, we brought this up, we asked for a meeting, we asked for discussions, and on every turn, we were cut off. So it became very frustrating. And I think it, I think the board of selectmen would want to know what we think about going forward because I think the town will have an issue moving forward if we just accepted this plan as is.
I'm not opposed to a subcommittee, but what I've heard tonight, this afternoon, is that there is, except for maybe one hole, is possible consensus on at least the longer course recommendations.
Exactly.
The shorter course recommendations, I've heard that the request would be that we go back to the green-red or whatever the shorter course on the current card is. My concern is if we go into a high-level goal, Steve, is we'll be another four years before we get anything done. I think we, we have an opportunity to establish a policy that says, we feel the tees should look like this, whatever that is. The input for that can come from him, it can come from the public, it can come from anywhere, but I feel that it would be within our purview to say that we feel for this golf course in the town of Howard that to optimize, maximize the playing enjoyment of the customers, we feel the tees ought to look like this. And I would think that's within our purview. I could be wrong, wouldn't be the first time. But that's, that's what I see. I see we're extremely, maybe much closer than I would have thought going into this meeting as to the, let me call it acceptability of this proposed, 2022 proposed card. It seems like there's maybe one point of contention in its whole 17. To be honest, I don't know how big a deal that is, maybe it's a big deal, I don't know. But I would focus on that and say, we've got some consensus, how do we get to the finish line of establishing, you know, is this good or is, is this, you know, something that, I just, it took us five years to get from one place to the other, and the town's not noted for speed in their, their actions. So I would opt to try to do something in the interest of getting something done that's at least close to being completely acceptable.
Good point. Joe?
I think we have all the information we need between 2017 and the 2022 draft of the holes, the sketches. We have all the information that we need. The other thing is, I think we have to, basically, we hire an architect to do a job.
Yeah.
And he's designed a course for different objectives. So I think we have to accept what he's done. I believe in what he's put forth. Now, if we have to make new tees, like some of his recommendations, I think that's all we have to do.
Is it time for public comment yet?
I want to make sure the committee's satisfied with, with our discussion.
I think, I think one other comment that should be made too. I think the relationship that we have between the committee, Roman, and the architect. I think the Roman and the architect have worked above duty in terms of trying to put stuff together for this committee. And I think, I've been, I've experienced a few golf directors in the town of Howard that I've never seen a golf director more detailed and more follow-up than Roman Greer. And I think he's been taking a kind of a trashing today a little bit. And I think we don't know how good we really have it when you take a look around at some of the municipal courses on the Cape and what we have here in Pembroke Valley. So I think, I think he should be given a little bit more respect in, in what he's been given to that. That's my, that's my personal feeling. And I think that's very important. And I think the relationship that we have with Mark Munjam, who has done many, many golf courses, and based on the sketches that he's put together as, as well as the narrative of his recommendations, I don't know what else we can get. I mean, that's, that's pretty detailed, and that's enough to make a decision moving forward.
Okay, Carol?
So there was no intention to trash Roman. I, we were simply stating our inability to get information from him and the fact that he did not in writing mirror our request. We don't know that, and we received nothing back in writing. It has, it has been very difficult to get information, and he would not discuss anything with us, and that was simply a fact. So that's not trashing in any way.
No. That's your opinion.
That's a fact.
Please, folks. So, as far as action within the committee, we have a lot of options in terms of a motion to approve, as was requested by Roman. We can take no action at all?
I wouldn't, I, my opinion is, we have, we're nowhere near ready to take action and vote on anything until we hear from the public.
Exactly.
They're all here, we can't exclude them. They're the taxpayers. We need to hear what their comments and thoughts are before.
I was just outlining options.
Yeah.
Okay? And I also, I mean, another possibility would be to entertain that idea. I mean, you, the two of you posed it, and because of the time constraints, I did not respond, but the idea of a subcommittee, Carol, to, you know, continue...
Well, I do think, I do think first we should hear from the public.
Yeah, but I, I want you as committeemen to understand what the options are.
I think we should hear from the most.
There may be more options after you listen to us.
Yes.
Okay, in that case, I'll open up the discussion to public comment. And I'm going to, in deference to Mr. Wilson, who was kind enough to put his thoughts in writing as well, I don't want it to be perceived as gender. But Dave, wait one second. Yeah. This is really important for the record. Please state your full name. We just, we need that because Mike Saragin is remotely connected to us and, and with this many people, I apologize, but I'll try to take an order of speakers that makes sense. Maybe I'll start with, I'll start with Dave because I said I would, but I'll move, whatever you think I should go.
Go ahead, Dave.
All right. I'm David Wilson, Howard resident and member of Pembroke Valley. I started working on this issue on behalf of my wife back in 2020. So I've been working, trying to work with the committee now for nearly three years on this topic. And my wife is not a competitive 18-hole golfer. She represents more of the average female golfer. And her interest was to get a shorter red course. Now, as I looked into this with the committee, I saw Mark Munjam's 2017 report. He also submitted a document from the PGA with input from the LPGA and the USGA. And in there, they talked about making courses shorter for women so it would be more enjoyable, it would play faster, and overall, you know, everybody would like it. So I started working with the committee, trying to get a shorter red course back then. If you look at that attachment, the recommendations that the PGA has for women are about 5,000 yards for a red tee and a shorter course for the other one. So what's concerning me from what I'm hearing from the group here today is I think you're all representing, you know, very competitive, very capable golfers, and you're forgetting about that group that is not capable of hitting a 5,000-yard course and should have an opportunity to play a shorter course. So what the PGA says and what the architect originally said in 2017 is there should be a 5,000-yard course and a shorter option. There are already between silvers and whites and blues options to go longer, but there's nothing available to go shorter than 5,000 yards. And I think that's the point that's missing. So thank you for your time, but I've been on this for three years already, and I would hesitate, I would hate to hear the outcome being that we haven't really shortened the course to accommodate the more average female golfer.
Dave, thank you very much. And I, Dave was kind enough, he put his thoughts in writing, and that will be entered in the record. It'll be a matter of record as far as minutes are concerned. And the lady in black...
I also sent a letter to the golf committee that I hope you receive. Your McCullough, Beverly McCullough? I sent it last week and sent it to the golf committee. And in it, I stated, I thought a simple solution for the kind being is to leave the green tees where they are for a shorter course, leave the red tees where they are for a longer course, and make a combo red and green on 17, all of the day.
Can we do that right now? Can we do that right now?
Yeah. I'll paint the tee off of a green mark.
17 and four. And four.
I said I'd do it.
Yes, our TV technician.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Michelle McElhanlon, a few points. One, respect is earned. Two, if I hire an architect to design my house... Two, if I hire an architect to design my house, I'm going to sit with him many, many, many times and tweak and tweak and tweak and tweak and tweak, without a doubt. I'm not just gonna say, okay, he's the expert, I accept it. No way. Three, I forgot my four. Three, many of us taught our children how to play, taught our grandchildren how to play, and we would take them, and we would walk to the middle of the fairway and we'd put a tee down. And that's how they learned at about 150 to start hitting, to start hitting their ball. Now, to do that to any woman, I don't care if she's an A, B, C, D, E player, to do that to any woman and just say, okay, just go drop your ball right there, put a tee marker down and hit it, a tee down and hit your ball, that's demeaning. It's very demeaning.
Okay.
To grandchildren, to children nine, 10, 11 years old, it's great. But that shouldn't be what the architect is proposing at these spots. And I forgot my fourth mark.
When you think of it?
I'll think of it. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
As I said earlier, I think you have to kind of put all those studies aside and all the various scorecards aside. To this woman's point, you have the tee boxes already there. You need a combination of some of those green tee boxes to shorten up your red course.
Right.
Though some of those boxes are so far back, they're right next to the men's boxes, and there's no way they're gonna be. You target some of the holes for the guys to reach, like 16. So you have green boxes out there on 16, for instance, on four, on five. Use a combination of them. You don't have to change the course. You have to fix the scorecards. And you have, you don't have it in front of you already, without investing any more money.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Sally Tuck. Just as far as the director of golf, the director of golf is also responsible for keeping the membership happy. And in my experience, most directors of golf work with greens committees at their facilities to also work with architects as a team, as a membership, not the director of golf and the architect making the decisions. That's just.
Okay. Sir?
I have just one simple question.
First, name?
Richard Urban.
Richard Urban. Thank you.
My simple question is, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, and we're talking about all of these things. Where does the buck stop? Who makes the final decision? It's a simple question.
Yeah, and there's a simple answer. Steve mentioned, the director of golf.
So the director of golf is the final resort here?
Yes.
I thought it was the town manager and the selectmen.
Yeah, to that, I mean, the director of golf reports to the town administration. So the existing town administrator and the town administrator.
Who reports to the board of selectmen?
The select board. Not the board of selectmen here, what counts. That changed in the last.
It still says B O S in there.
But anyways, but yes. Yeah. But that's the hierarchy is.
I was chairman of one of the commissions a while back, and I felt like we were the final decision maker, given much of the time.
That, the charter changes that Don Howell alluded to at the last meeting, I think that dates back to the post-COVID. You know what I mean? It was in that particular timeframe. And the committee charge was spelled out specifically, you know, as.
So the director of golf has the final word?
Yes. Yeah.
I have a quick question. Is there a dollar amount associated with these changes that could be made as far as the tees go? I just don't, haven't heard anything.
No.
But there would be charges, big charges for additional tee boxes. So that's why you're proposing.
There could be, yeah, there could be, depending on, you know, what's involved and where they are located. But, you know, to Carol's point, I mean, it's not rocket science. There's a general configuration of tees that.
I thought Roman mentioned 40,000 a tee, in that range.
Yep. He said 250 grand to implement the 2017 plan.
Yeah, if we're going back to that, and I wasn't trying to reference that. I was trying to reference, for example, Roman with resources available through a couple of our different projects, like the cart path improvements that we've incrementally put in place and/or the bunkers. He thought that there would be some monies available to take those five tees that Munjam has identified as, you know, potentially being of use to enhance those and bring them up to a standard aesthetically that would satisfy, you know, I think, you people.
And then a comment to go along with that. As far as respect goes, the director does deserve respect, but I think your committee members also command that same kind of respect in relation to putting in questions and not getting any answer, getting put off as far as showing up at various meetings and so forth. That's just my own comment.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm Chris Hardy, and I also wrote an email, but not being from the town of Harwich. I sent it to Carol, Martha, and Roman, and to Ellen. So if it should have gotten passed along to you, my apologies.
Thank you.
One fact.
Well, I'm not sure I get a copy.
One factor that has not been mentioned at all, and I do serve on the board of the Cape Cod Women's Golf League, where we play golf courses all over the Cape.
Yeah.
And we see everybody's women's tee boxes. And I think Cranberry Valley having two sets of women's tees, which is an advantage, and that's a benefit as you look at it competitively, is not all, captains does not have that. Not everybody has that. And roughly 5,000, roughly 54, 5500 is competitive with what other golf courses do on the Cape. And that accommodates the range of competitive skills and length of distance of drives. So I think we need to also do a competitive review and understand what the other slums of the Cape are doing and not make the decision without them.
And that's true. Okay. And, yes.
I didn't know if you saw me.
You're too close.
Karen, you said, I'm obviously a member of the course and of the league, but I'm also the vice chair of the finance committee for Harwich, and also the finance committee liaison to this committee.
Right.
And so I just wanted to make a point on committees. So I think, Steve, I think you made some really good points on committees and how that all that stuff works. And I do believe that Roman has the responsibility to sort of make recommendations to his superiors on whatever he sees coming up and best for the course. So that's his job, right? And then to go implement those changes when he receives the funding approval.
We try to do that and line up with the capital plan.
Yep. Yeah, if it's 50K or more, I understand that. But from a committee standpoint, you are here, and I know we've been through this, too, trying to understand our role on the finance committee. It is to advise the paid employees of this town. In our case, on the finance committee, it's to advise the town administrator and the board of selectmen. In your case here, it's to advise Roman and whoever else is on the executive team or the paid team at the course.
Or the management team.
Yeah, so I mean, that's for real, right? It works both ways, if you ask me. So it's not, if somebody says, respect, it's all around here, you guys need to communicate to each other. Roman shouldn't be implementing stuff or any of that stuff, and I'm not saying he is. Like, it shouldn't go either way. Nobody should be working independent of the other group. That's why he attends all of your meetings, right? Gives a director's report. So that's, to me, is pretty crystal clear. I mean, I don't think, I think Roman, if we talk about this particular topic around tee, focusing on the tee expansion or whatever. Tee placements, there's things that need to happen. You have all the information, you guys have all seen it, there's reports out the bois eau around 2017, 2022. We're calling every tee by a different color, God knows why. But there's, the fact that we're here is because there's so much confusion around all of that stuff. And no, I'm not qualified to say you should do this or do that, but because we've gotten to this point, everybody has an opinion now. But so what can we do to make that better? In my opinion, I think the, we do need to step back. I think Roman should take all the information he has from Munjam, 2017, 2022, whatever he has in between or whatever. He has a ton of other information as it relates to looking at other golf courses and doing comparisons. He has resources probably from the PGA, LPGA, PGA about standard, specific goals for all tees, what colors they should be in, and what order, right? We shouldn't be just randomly changing that. We should go with what's normal and what's the standard across the PGA and LPGA, in my opinion, anyway. He should identify what's the suggested length of those tees for everyone. There's gotta be some standard. And if we had a single thing to look at to say, that's the standard, and not your opinion or my opinion, we'd be so much better off. So that, to me, is, I think Roman needs to create a master plan. Everybody's like, well, what is the master plan? Is it 2017? Is it 2022? I don't think it's either of those. I think he takes all the information from his study about tee evaluation and puts together a master plan. It's not, Munjam's isn't the master plan, that's an architect making a recommendation. I was in consulting, too. They take that and they do what the hell they want with it, right? So it's not up to you as a consultant, you're not the expert on everything. They take in sources from different consultants. They always paired us up against other consultants and said, you know, do the bake-off or something like that. That is just normal, right? So that, to me, is Roman's job, is to take all that information, put together a master plan. I think a subcommittee way overdoing it at this point. You got, we've done that. We can sit here and talk for days on this, but it's not up to us to do. It's Roman's job, that he gets paid for, to put together a master plan that brings in all the sources of where to get all this information. Then it's his job to bring it back to the committee, you guys, and say, this is what I did, this is what I reviewed, all these different sources, this is my plan and my recommendation, what do you guys think? And that's a public forum, because they are, and that's where this group, or anybody in this town, has the ability to participate. That's what municipal government is all about.
Thank you.
I'm not done. So I have one more thing. I know, two minutes. I have one more thing. Beyond that, is once it's approved, this is the last thing, and I apologize, is just to, once he has an approved plan, you guys do whatever voting you do, he brings it to the town administrator, whatever, they get a quote for how much to implement this, right? If it's 250 grand, that's gotta go through a process. And I know, I'm just using that because you mentioned that earlier. But that, you gotta get a quote to implement those changes, and then get a prioritized changes, and create a timeline, and then go implement them. It's very simple. In my mind, it's very simple. We're just, everybody's all crazy because we are, it's too confusing at this moment.
Just remember, the finance committee.
I know.
Open that purse.
Yeah.
And that will expedite everything.
I will.
Marie Malane, I listened to all these things, but one thing I see is clear that hasn't been done is, all of the stakeholders have not been asked their importance in the beginning. And I've heard from Carol, and I've heard from Martha, they have asked repeatedly, before you do anything, you need to step back, and ask the stakeholders what is important. And then publicly disclose, this is what we requested, and this is why we can't do it. But I think that's very critical in whatever step you take to move ahead.
Who are the stakeholders?
The people who play golf, the taxpayers and the members. The members, and I'm a member of Cranberry Valley as well, as long as the taxpayer's in power.
I think, I think. Okay. But to multiple people's points, this has been on the agenda for the golf committee, which is a public meeting, multiple times, over a course of many years. And we have virtually no participation from the public at all at our regular monthly meetings. The agenda is created, it's published, it's put on the website, it's the same Tuesday every month, it's televised. So even if you had a conflict with the date and time, you have the ability to see it and hear what those opinions are. I would, as a, personally, as a committee member, I would love, I was thrilled when I came walking in here. I said, this is great. We got the public finally interested in something. If you want to be a stakeholder, you have to participate. You can't, you can't sit idly by and only get involved when it becomes a contentious issue or whatever. And please, I would have loved to have had public input all along, when we would, we've been discussing this at virtually every meeting for the past at least two years, and we've had virtually no one in the audience, or no one from the public, sent us any comments or opinions until that man right there did.
Steve, please.
I did, but you don't have it for some reason.
I just wanted to say stakeholders represented by certain people on the board and perhaps other people, not myself individually.
People for the record, too, I did get a communication. Mr. White, his name is Paul White, he communicated this afternoon, he's in quarantine, but he thought that this was important enough, and I just wanted to share, it'll be in the public record, so you can read the whole thing, but he does, you know, he said, please give my best wishes to the members of the committee and those that attend this afternoon. I regret that I am recently diagnosed as COVID positive, despite being doubly vaccinated, twice boosted, blah, blah, blah. I very much appreciated the opportunity to give you these comments and concerns since I was unable to attend. I was also impressed by Mr. Wilson, in particular, with the comments regarding the impact of features of a hole versus distance and considering tee placement, that he had looked at your document closely. And my sense is that this has been, it's taken a while to get to this point. We're still on a viable path to do what's best in the interest of all golfers. Having reviewed this material, including today's advanced public comment, I'm inclined to believe that we have, that we ought to proceed with Mr. Munjam's report as a basis for further discussion. Dialogue and implementation is a working document for Cranberry Valley's improvements. My expectation is that we continue to consider these various aspects, and I support the use of the report going forward. But within the committee, is there any action that you would like to take?
Well, I just, I don't know whether it was public record or not, but Roman had sent something out that he's recommending the endorsement of this plan, the Munjam plan.
Which one?
The 2007, 2020.
The one on the fairway tee boxes.
Oh, the one that doesn't have any verbiage to it. Because it has pictures. It's a picture.
Just sketches. Just a little sketches of it.
It's a picture.
But he's recommending the endorsement of that.
I would like to make a motion that we don't approve the plan as it is presented to us with the fairway, with the green tees on fairway on five holes.
Okay.
So it has to be a positive motion, that's kind of a negative motion, honestly? So if somebody, just for process standpoint?
Okay.
If somebody makes a positive motion to approve it, and then it's the opposite way that people can vote on it, and if you think you're ready to vote, and you would say no, and no, or whatever, whoever, it's just a process thing? You do it at town.
I, again, I don't think we're ready to vote either. I think, I think, I think that, I'll reiterate, repeat myself, I guess, I think we need to just look at the high-level goals, and I can certainly see one of the high-level goals being that all tees, regardless of color, need to be on a tee box, not on a fairway. And that's a pretty simple goal. Now, it may take us who knows how many years to figure out where we're gonna get the money to be able to build some new tee boxes, if that's what we have to ultimately do. But, or we can try to reuse the existing ones, but again, to me, standard one on the high-level goals is, you shouldn't be teeing off from a fairway, you should be teeing off from a tee box.
So, 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 okay, I will withdraw that, but could I say in the affirmative that I would like to move that we vote for the existing tee boxes to stay for the existing tee boxes to stay as they are until we, such time as we have the plan and the funds to build proper tee boxes? Can I do that? It's in the affirmative.
But I thought we had, I thought we had an interim solution that
I thought we could.
That was even better than what we have today.
I thought it was.
Like in regard to four and 17? I'd like to see that red and green together.
Yes.
In the interim?
Yes, in the interim.
I think there could be some changes that could be so positive that we could keep our 5,300
Ms. McCullough said.
And 49 in the short.
She's the one that made that recommendation.
You got a hand in the back.
I know, I see. But I'm just trying to get focused here. I don't want to disservice anyone. But the status of your motion, you've withdrawn it, and you were, are you still trying to craft some language? Carol, I would embrace Mrs. McCullough's.
What I don't, I, we've had two endorsements for the plan as it stands already. We've heard that from Roman. He is endorsing it. We've just heard Paul White, who is not in attendance at this meeting endorsing a plan, without hearing our comments. And so my fear is that there is going to be a vote to approve it, and I don't have an option to do anything to modify that plan.
But they're not at the meeting, so they can't vote.
Can I suggest that Roman watch this video? I mean, there's been a lot of awesome conversation, and you guys have said some things that I think is very valuable. If he watched this and just put together, based on everything he has, step back, lock yourself in a room, and come back with a recommendation, based on everything you heard, what would you do? Not what would, not specifically, "I want to implement this report." Like, think about everything everybody said, and just zill it into a recommendation that, "I heard you guys, and this is what I think," and then come back and share it.
I would just, can I respond to that?
Yes.
So he has heard everything that we just said. He has heard it multiple times. The only thing he did not hear were the comments from our public that is here and present tonight. So he, having said that, he still has not changed one point of his proposal. So that's where it gets a little bit frustrating.
Thank you.
I guess we're still in the, I'm being flexible.
I'm going down here.
I don't want you to lose it. Go ahead, Bridget.
Okay. My name's Bridget Hipppler, and I've been a member of this golf course for a long time. I also was on the golf committee a few years ago. Now, the troubling thing to me is when Roman talks about the plan, it's like he's not taking anything else into consideration except what Mark Munjen said, like he's a god, and we can't, we have no wig over him. I think it's important also that we look at our resources. Do we want to spend the money for those tee boxes? We have a remedy for this right now. You could have a combination tee, which I asked for 10 years ago. Use the red, red green, get it rated by the USGA. That would take care of a lot of this trouble. No tee boxes involved, just give me a combo rating. If the people that are, if the, and I hate when you call it women's tees because that bugs me. They are forward tees. They are not women's tees.
That's the future.
Do we call the silver tees old men's tees? It's a forward tee. We have tee boxes. You can take that yardage off, get it rated by the USGA for combination tees, and that would solve all our problems and not cause a disaster.
So specifically, you're talking about, if I understood you correctly, holes number 17 and?
Seventeen and four.
Four, four. Thank you.
But combination tees will remedy this without spending on top.
They already exist.
If they want to play a longer course, that, those two tees alone will solve a lot of problems.
Okay. Thank you.
And everybody can play what they like.
Somebody's in the back.
Which they can. Wait, that. Yes, ma'am.
Carrie Louise Hiewell, I'm actually president of the Steinhold group. And on behalf of those ladies, I would agree with Bridget in that that you could come to a solution by changing just the red, four, and 17 to red green. And I think Arlene would be quite happy. I'd also like to add that I'd slightly disqualify you that you have a pick and choose and take Roman tonight. I think it's a pretty beneficial for him to have been here since he spoke to himself.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Jack?
Hold on, I want to speak for Roman, but I believe in our meetings, he said that the course yardage has, for the MGA to rerate a course, the course yardage has to change by 100 yards.
That's easily done with those two holes.
It is.
And, and the USGA has a chart. And if you change the distance of a, of the course by so much, not enough to qualify for a rerating, you can make that change yourself. It's on a chart with the USGA and their handicap manager.
Okay.
So the changing of those two holes only are just slightly short of the 100 yards.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion, based on what Bridget just said?
Well, let, Martha.
What?
I'm being, Martha.
Are we?
As far as giving Roman guidance in our advisory capacity?
Well, I don't understand what you mean, Clem.
But I think what he's saying is we want a motion that says, leave the tees, leave the current tee structure is, except change 17, four and 17, that'll allow green and red tees.
Together on the forward box.
Together on the forward box.
Right, yes.
John?
I think if you go in combo tees, the other thing that you should take a look at is in addition to four and 17, before we rush into it, we should also look at the other combinations that go back to 17 in terms of where they feel the tees should be. I don't think we should limit it to four and 17. I think we should take a comprehensive look at it and say, are there a few other holes that we should have combo tees as well?
Like, I'd like to look at.
I don't want to make a decision today going four and 17.
Me either.
Thinking back next week, saying, "Well, we should do 11 and 12," or, you know, whatever. I think we should make one decision at one time.
I also like what Karen said in that. He is the director of golf. And it would be wonderful if he could put, and I can't wait to put these all in a file box, and take a look at your course and look at the needs of the course. Having a short, playable course, forward tee, and have one that suits lower handicap as a forward tee. He should be able to walk that course. I feel like I could do it in my sleep. I've been through this so much. And come up with recommendations. I mean, definitely four and 17. But I love the idea of number 16, moving that to the green tee and having it a par four, and then having 14 push us back a little bit, and have a normal par five there. You know, those are things that would really benefit the course and not make it so difficult.
And 16, the green tee.
I'm almost 80.
You've got a woman that's been raising her hand for the last 20 minutes.
I just wanted to comment. I think Carol's initial motion not to accept the report is legitimate motion. And then you could have multiple motions here tonight if you so wish to go into the weeds with, you know, all these holes. But I disagree that it wasn't a positive motion to make not to accept the report. So I see nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I think what Karen was saying is that technically we have to make positive motions.
You can run it by the town administrator later and say, "Was this valid?" If it wasn't, you can just put it in your notes that says, "We did this, but it wasn't valid." I mean, that's not the wrong.
The purpose was not to accept the recommendation by Roman, but, but to leave the green course as it is until such time as we.
In fairness, I say, do it since you have all these people in the room. And if it's not, again, if it's not, there's all kinds of policies, we know that. So I might have it wrong. But if it's not acceptable from a policy standpoint, you can just mark that in your notes.
Yes, ma'am.
Might I just ask you, if a motion is made and seconded, do you not have to vote on it?
Yeah.
It's been made and seconded, but it was withdrawn.
Yes, but if she hadn't withdrawn it, aren't you compelled to vote on it, or no?
And we have it for her.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just do it again.
So if she made it again, you could go ahead and vote on it.
It's up to you, Carol.
If it's seconded.
I would move that we prefer not accept the proposed option as presented to us, but rather keep the green, existing green tee, the shorter course as it is until such time as we are able to develop a funded plan.
For what? A funded plan for?
The proposed plan, a funded proposed plan.
For tee replacement.
I would limit it to just say, reject the.
All right, come on.
All right, just to keep it simple, that I move that we not accept the green tees as proposed.
The Munjen.
From the Munjen report.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Either one, right?
I personally think the whole topic should be tabled until we come up with a comprehensive plan for the whole, for the whole 18 holes. Okay. My only comment would be, we got some terrific feedback tonight. Martha and Carol, all their work, the public. I think we need to give Roman the opportunity to review the recording of this meeting, hear what the stakeholders have said, hear what the members' concerns have been before we make a decision on the plan on going forward. And it should be an agenda item on our next regular meeting. And if Roman for some reason decides not to, or doesn't find the time to review the minutes of today's meeting and the recording, then we proceed from there. But as much as we want to give Roman advice, we need Roman to have the ability to have the time to hear what was said here tonight.
Jack?
That's fine with me. Another comment.
What's that?
Another comment.
Yep.
I'm just curious, so I'm getting back to Bev McCullough's suggestion about using the combo on, say, 17 and four. Is that something that could be done temporarily to come up with a solution as what to do?
I think John's comment was that there may be other holes where you want to combine them as well, so.
We could do a lot of things. I'm simply moving that we not accept the plan to put women on fairway tees.
I agree.
Yes, my name is Margaret Mello. I'd also ask about the impact that any decision that's being made about new tees, old tees, red, green, whatever, combo tees, has the MGA been scheduled to come in and rate the course?
No. They will not, they will not schedule until, they were here, I think, what, less than two years ago, right?
Yeah, right, two.
They haven't. They're not scheduled.
Plus, you need, you need yardage change to do that.
And understand that as a result of this discussion, I think Roman's tentative idea of having a course rerated, that would absolutely have to be postponed. Because we don't have that information in hand.
He has already sent all the documents to Mass Golf. That has been sent, I think, I think it is put on hold.
Well, maybe we ought to reject the proposal just to be safe.
Why? It's definitely not going to make any difference.
Who told you that?
But if, but if he's sent, if he's already sent the documents.
No, it doesn't.
By the way, people, Mr. Crook, John Crook is affiliated with Mass Golf. That's why he speaks with authority, so.
Okay, so we had the motion.
Yeah.
It was seconded.
I'll have to second it.
Okay. We going to vote?
What's the motion again, please?
To reject it.
I asked to reject the green short option until such time as we are able to develop and fund the proper placement and building of those, that suggestion.
I'll take a roll, call and vote.
Vote. Maybe I've made it too complicated to reject the green plan as proposed. I, period.
Yes, period.
Period. I've never done this before, so.
Yeah, just take away. So I second that.
Okay.
No.
Call or roll, call?
Yeah. Roll, call, vote? John?
Aye.
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 Nay.
So that's one, two, three?
You haven't voted.
He did, he voted nay.
Yes.
We've got three nays and three yays, correct?
And we do this by name on the.
So what happens?
What if you made a motion just to postpone approval?
I just want to back up for a second. John has a recorded vote, nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Aye.
Carol, four.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Clem Smith, nay. Martha?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, nay.
Okay. It's a three-three split. The motion does not carry because it was a split vote, which opens the door to other possibilities. Yes.
Would it possible that a motion to just delay approval? Would, you rejected, you rejected to just delay a little bit, a little more information?
Well, yeah, as chair, I would humbly suggest, I would entertain a motion that, based on what I think collectively has been aired here, as well as what Steve said, a motion to advise the director of golf to give this, you know, further study based on the content of this meeting, based on the comments from the general public, as well as the, you know, comments within the committee itself.
May I just ask you one question before we go on? You, you, the three of you are voting for?
No, we don't need, A, we don't need to give you clarification of reasoning or thoughts behind our vote. And B, we voted against. The motion. The motion.
Yeah.
That's all we voted against was the motion. So I would like to propose a new motion.
Okay.
We make, we advise Roman that there was a lot of good feedback, input from this meeting, that he review it, and we make this the number one agenda item on our next monthly meeting.
Which is September 13th.
September 13th it is then. And that's, that's my motion, anyway.
What are we asking for?
We're asking for.
They just want to say, they don't have to claim their names, but they have to claim their ages.
What we'd be asking for is post this, post-review of this meeting and all of the feedback that we've received from all of the different people here, including committee members, but also public, that Roman review again. members, but also public, that Roman review again the Munjam report and advise us as to why, since we got a lot of feedback, that people are not comfortable with following the Munjam report to the letter, why he's recommending that.
If he still is, guys, he may not. I mean, he may hear what that lady said about going to other courses and look at how they're set up. Like, there may be other pieces of information, not just the Munjam. You're asking him to look at the broader perspective and say, based on all of that, what do you recommend and why?
Steve, we don't.
Steve?
We don't need a motion for that, though, do we?
To get it?
No, that's, that's part of our next agenda.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. And I, and to be frank, John, I was, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, and air to the public. I mean, clearly, this is a big issue. We never had this kind of audience before. I'd like to assure them, so that at least when they go home, they know it's going to be the first thing we talk about on, in the first item.
You should ask for Clem to go back to Roman with that request.
No, Roman doesn't have to approve our agenda.
I don't think we need a motion on it, but I think indirectly, we've got a pretty good way forward with combo tees, to make this whole thing work. So I mean, I think we have a potential solution.
I would definitely do. I would agree with that.
That's not too far in the future.
I just don't want women put on fairway tee boxes, which the green proposal does.
But if the. That was, that was very helpful.
If the combo tees are an interim solution, do we want to have some recommendation for that?
I would like to hear, I would like to hear, I would like to hear Roman's feedback when we pose that to him. We say, hey, we learned a lot at, at this special meeting. Roman, clearly, one suggestion was if we went with combo tees, wouldn't cost us any money, and it would seem to be a great interim solution. What do you think, Roman? And for all I know, Roman's going to say, I agree wholeheartedly, or he's going to say, oh, no, that's going to break X, Y, Z rule. I don't know.
Steve, excuse me, but to the point of emotion, John, one man's opinion, I think it gives it gravitas, as far as this is the direction the committee would like to see you take, as opposed to up in the air.
Yeah.
Do you like the specificity? I mean, I like the specificity of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Could I, I would entertain a motion, I mean, a second, to Steve's motion.
Can you repeat it, please?
That we.
There we go. It's not that easy, Steve.
That we, that we make this the first agenda item on our next monthly meeting.
Make what?
We make a review of the Munjam report based on the inputs that we had today.
Could I, could I just maybe, without being semantics here?
Sure.
Could the request, or could the agenda item be review the golf director's recommendation? And one piece of input in that is the Munjam plan.
But he's already made a, he's, excuse me, but he's already made a recommendation.
He might change it.
That's that, but, but we can't presume that, but that's, that, that was the reason for Carol's motion, because he's already made a recommendation, which was to accept it.
I guess all I'm saying is, let's ask him to bring it again with, and maybe with the, if the resolution here is, the golf director will bring this recommendation inclusive of comments made by the public, inclusive of a review of competitive courses, and inclusive of the Munjam report, and any other data the director believes is pertinent to making a recommendation. At least that way, he's not just reviewing the Munjam report. He's, he's saying, this is what I recommend based on all. He might just give you the Munjam report back and say, this is all I need, but.
Is Roman invited to this, to your community?
Yes, yes. He was invited specifically to this one, as was the architect.
Right, but his, your normal.
Yes.
Monthly meeting, he is invited to, not required to.
That's for us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So.
You can't make it.
With a motion on the floor, needing a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And, 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 Lord Smith, I liked your thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, to be.
It's got to be part of the motion.
I like all-inclusive.
It's got to be part of the motion. You got to say it. Sorry, it's just part of the process.
That.
Further discussion of recommendation on the Munjam report based on the input we received.
In the public.
At, at this special meeting on, at the special meeting on August 23rd.
Roman's a smart guy. I think he'll figure it out.
Yeah.
And that's close enough. Okay? Any, any further discussions?
Okay.
Okay? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. You know, and I'm sure Roman will, you know.
Come.
Give this, give this due diligence. A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. So moved and seconded by Jack Conley. All in favor? All right?